Capran?
Here.
Gretkin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Stand for a moment of silence, followed by the press.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll write to the consent agenda today, which is items two through 11C. You can consider each item to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it and state your name and the address for the record. If you have an item not on the agenda you want to speak on, come up under citizen concerns. Again, state your name and address. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is a reading of the city council minutes of September 10th, 2018. Three is a resolution approving the IDOT financial report for streets fiscal year 2017 and 18. Four is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the south perimeter fence construction project at Sioux Gateway Airport. Five are resolutions amending the authorized budget, pay, complement, and the position classification manual and pay schedule by reclassifying the administrative assistant position to projects management specialist in the city manager's office. Six are resolutions proposing to sell property at 2016 Nebraska Street, petitioners of Sioux City Community School District. I need to abstain on that item. I need to vote no on that item.
I'll call for a separate vote.
Okay.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Stand.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Passes three zero, three one one. Seven are actions relating grants and contributions. A is a resolution accepting a small community air service development grant from the Department of Transportation for a new nonstop service at Gateway Airport. B is a resolution authorizing the submission of an airport improvement supplemental funding grant application to FAA for runway and taxiway reconstruction project at the Gateway Airport. C is a resolution accepting a $2,500 contribution from Rush Works for tickets used at the Combe Park. E is a resolution approving a memorial or gifts application from Sunnybrook Community Church for construction of a basketball court at Carlin Park. E is a resolution accepting the submission of the local housing trust fund program application to the Iowa Finance Authority in approving the use of the city funds as a match. A are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution authorizing agreement for city, bridge, federal aid swap funding with the IDOT for redecking of the Dace Avenue Bridge over the Floyd River. B is a resolution approving a contract to strong construction for the paving patchback program. C is a resolution approving a contract to Nelson Construction and Development for the sidewalk program. D is a resolution approving amendment number two to the service provider agreement with certified testing services for the Pierce Street reconstruction project. E is a resolution. F is a resolution approving change order one and authorizing final payment to Knife River Midwest for the annual crack ceiling project. G is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with HR Green for the Bluff Road reconstruction project. Was there only one interview on this because it's DOT money? Amazing, we can't, nobody from the engineering department knows about this project?
This is a project, she actually asked me to stick here, I'm not sure where. Gordon?
And I did talk to Gordon. This is Dawn Horner from HR Green. We're doing the I-29 trail project that's right along the same corridor, and so the trail has already been designed in a location along where Bluff Road will be. So, we're doing the same work and construction work in that same area.
That's not, I'm not disrespecting you, but that's not the question. The question is, did this get two bids? I understand that you're probably the natural to get it, but that's not... I'm gonna move, we defer for a week until we get that answer.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Nine are purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to integration partners for the purchase of Extreme Network switches. Good job, John, getting three bids. I'm sure two of them were phony companies you made up, but at least you got the three bids. We're real proud of you today. Say right where you're at. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Ed M. Feld equipment for two Bower compressors for use in the fire station one and three. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Ed M. Feld equipment for the installation of two Bower compressors at fire stations one and three. Ten are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list, if you have any questions, eleven, receive a minute, see the list, if you have any questions, come forward. Any questions or anybody want to speak on any of those items?
Just a bit of good news today. We received information on number nine, B and C. That's a CIP for our self-contained breathing apparatus, and we did receive the assistance to firefighters grant for that for eight hundred, or excuse me, $500,000. So, that's gonna help that CIP project a lot. We'll be able to give some money back.
Terrific.
Good job, thanks.
Thanks, Keith.
Fire Prevention Bureau did a wonderful job on that, so, thank you.
Tom, thanks.
Thank you.
Are we voting?
Yes. Remember, yours are on opposite sides.
Oh. What? I vote here.
Oh geez.
Okay.
I voted for him.
This one's still broken?
I'd tease.
Need a little help anyway.
How did you get? Yeah, let me hit yours. How did you get the maybe to come up on this? Well?
Wait, number one. There it is.
Which one?
I got it, I'm just trying to get it to come up.
Passes five zero. I'm assuming. Twelve is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Convention Center renovation project. I'll move that.
Second.
Five zero?
Yeah.
Passes five zero. Thirteen is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs, the Morningside Library renovation project. Move it?
Don, you getting excited, Dan?
I don't...
I feel he's trained for a record.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's not slow him down.
Have to be somewhere at eight o'clock. We can wait while I'm chatting after talking to yourselves.
You have to catch a plane, you better hurry up.
Where are our screens? Five oh?
Yeah.
Okay. Fourteen is a hearing and resolution approving specs and contract and cost of renewables fuel equipment procurement number two project deferred from September 10th, 2018. I'll move that.
Second.
We're in a hurry.
Passes five zero. Fifteen is a hearing and resolution approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement with the Warrior Hotel Limited Partner, deferred from September 10th, 2018. Motion request to defer this item to September 24th, 2018. I'll move that.
Second. Second, I second it.
Thank you.
I'll abstain on this one. Inflict of interest.
Did you vote at least, though? Good.
I did, yeah.
Alex, I'm waiting on yours.
My screen blanked.
Is it working? I can call it. All right, I'm gonna call it, is that okay, Mayor?
Yep.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Abstain. Sixteen is ordinance amending the housing maintenance code to increase the rental permit fee schedule. I'll move that.
Second.
You run this by the Rental Association and all those people and...
Dara Block, Code Enforcement Manager. Actually, I've been to a couple of different meetings. It's been an ongoing process for several years. It's been ten years since we've had a rental increase, and then, most recently, it went in front of the Building Housing Code Board, and they unanimously approved it. They actually would like to see it in a three-year implement, is what, how it's outlined for suggested approval right now, taking a little bit each time for the next three years.
My question was, or I had a few questions. It doesn't, does it include, like, larger apartment complexes?
Yes, it does. Your initial, your initial fee is for the structure, and then, if you have additional units in that structure, it's so many dollars per.
Yeah.
So, right now, it's twenty and five. So, it's twenty dollars for the initial, so a duplex, obviously, would be twenty-five, triplex would be thirty, so it just keeps going up from there.
Yeah.
Like, neighboring, some of our neighboring communities are at fifty dollars for the initial and ten dollars for each additional unit.
You said neighboring ones?
Yes.
I was trying to think of proximity when you were saying that, because, gosh, if we haven't amended that in ten years, and then, even after three years of gradual increase, we're still not getting close to that fifty dollars. I was just thinking, do we, is there a reason that we're gonna be so slow catching up to this, or are there so...
Well, I think it's...
I understand, but they don't want a big jump.
This kind of goes back a number of years. We've talked about it several years of doing just exactly what we're doing here, and this is a gradual way of doing it. You try to jump too much on some of these landlords, it's gonna be a very difficult, you know, for some of them to swallow, if you will, get behind it. So, many of, the last meeting that I was at with the, with the association, it's been quite some time now, but they understood the need for it. They were thankful we weren't at that level, and maybe gave the indication they thought that they had jumped too far when they first went into the program, so... You look at some communities that have a large number, such like Ames, for instance, that has so many rental units, this is a lot more in line with what they are at than what across the river it has.
I just wanna make sure we continue to look at that item, I don't want to...
Yeah.
Another ten years and be like, oh, well, I guess we've been...
I agree. This is all part of a program. We're looking at all of our permit fees. Won't be too long we bring it back to council. It's been since 2012, I believe, is when I took back, maybe fourteen, the building permit fees for commercial and residential building permit fees. We adjusted them at that time, and under the Mayor's request, back at the last budget hearing, went through it, did a review once again of some of the other communities on building permit fees, and that, in a lot of cases, not every case, but in a lot of cases, we were considerably lower than other communities around the area, so that's increases will be coming through, probably about a couple of months, anyway. We'll finish that up.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
Call it, it's okay. Waters?
Capran? Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. But I don't want to do second, third. I want to make sure landlords have a chance to come and speak, so, absolutely. Okay, we'll go to citizen concerns, and the first one up is Heath Weber.
Good afternoon. My name's Heath Weber, I live at 4411 Morningside Avenue, and I have a number of concerns regarding the Morningside Avenue reconstruction project. So, things that I need to make sure you all understand, the project, of course, is significantly brained some issues. My biggest concern, of course, as we move forward with the project, is the, the safety study, the traffic safety study, that indicates that that traffic corridor is 160% higher accident rate than, than the state average. I think that's a pretty significant concern. I don't think that any of you would have taken this office and said that you would disregard those concerns. It feels like they, they're being disregarded. The alternative, that, that three lane that really got swept aside very quickly at the meeting last spring reduces the accident rate by as much as 50%, as noted in the study, and I think that's a, that's certainly something that you all need to consider as, as we move forward. I'm not saying that those four lanes at either end should be eliminated, because I think the, the businesses at either end certainly have reason to have those four lanes, but also the residences that are in the middle have no reason to have four lanes. The dieting down of that street would not impact traffic at a very significant rate. If you read this study, you would understand that there is a, a pretty small impact on the, the movement of traffic. I think that the new Seventh Street entrance, the new Seventh Street corridor is beautiful. I mean, I think you all have done really great work on that, congratulations. That is not going to be the case on the Morningside Avenue reconstruction project. The two blocks on which I live, there are six electric poles that haven't been buried. I was under the understanding that they would be buried, and they are not being buried, so there's this beautiful corridor with these antique lights that are set up on the one end, and then on our end, there are, I mean, it's electric poles, and at some point, that high traffic rate, 160% higher than the state average, will affect one of us, because someone's gonna have an accident on one of those poles, and so that'll affect us in a way that is not great. There are fewer residents there. My neighbors are mostly older, in their seventies and eighties. They walk on that street. There's no buffer on the, on the north side of the street for any of those people to walk. It's traffic and, and then the sidewalk. I'm concerned for my neighbors. I want them to be well, and lots of them use that on a daily basis, and I want to make sure that they're safe, and I think a buffer of either parking or a bike lane on, on the north side of the street would be helpful to keep our residents safe. Morningside Avenue, for Morningside students are running on that section of road all the time. Dave Nash has a great team, and, and they, they work a lot. My communication from the city has been pretty abysmal. I've negotiated a number of, of things with my property to keep my property value, I think, elevated as opposed to it being affected negatively. Trying to get some sort of information with my landscape architect, I only found out from, from talking with the workers in front of my house that, that things were gonna be poured that next day, or that grading was gonna happen, and so I called Justin, and then some things started to happen, which was great, but I think that's something that certainly can, can be improved upon. It's been frustrating, because it feels like, because there is just one person who's speaking, because there are rentals, and there are elderly neighbors, that one voice isn't being heard, and it's being really disregarded. It's frustrating, because I've invested a lot of money in that property to help make that corridor more beautiful. I'm proud of my home, I'm proud of that area, I, I love where I live. It's just frustrating that, that there's been a lack of communication and a lack of understanding. Finally, I've, I've noticed, I've driven around town a lot, and areas where there are lots of people, traffic moves at a, at a slower rate. On Third Street, by the casino, it's 25 miles an hour, and there's significant indication along Third Street that is 25 miles an hour. There's a 30 mile an hour sign as you enter, oh, it's probably 100 yards from the, the South San Hob and Morningside Avenue, Transit Avenue intersection, there is not an indication of speed limit at all on Morningside Avenue. The next indication of speed limit is as you're coming up Lakeport, right after, right before, probably right, right before the CenturyLink area, there's a 30 mile per hour indication. Of course, I was driving to visit some friends in Whispering Creek, and they have a bright flashing light that keeps traffic moving at a, at a safe space, and I spend lots of time on the phone with the police department. It is unsafe, and I'm, I'm worried for young people, I'm worried for old people in my neighborhood, and I would encourage and hope that you could help the process by at least considering something to, A, make the space a little more beautiful, the road isn't poured yet, we can still bury those lines, and to look at making some compromises for those residences that are in, in the path of that, of that traffic.
Well, it shows you how much influence I have. If you were at the meeting at the library, I said it should go down to three lanes there. I don't know why, in a residential neighborhood, when it's really tight, and you open your door and you get it taken off, that it has to be four lanes. I don't understand that. It makes absolutely no sense to me.
I think you disagreed at the, at the May meeting that was here, though.
What's that?
I think you disagreed at the May meeting that was here.
Oh, no, I've always said that two-block stretch, three-block stretch should be three lanes.
Hallelujah.
I did.
It's really, it's really frustrating.
Out in Morningside, I said it that night, it doesn't make any sense. If you want to cool the traffic, the only way to do that is three lanes, and I don't understand, as I drive West Seventh, where the street's a lot wider, or at least as wide, can handle a lot of traffic, that we did that, but yet here, we don't want to do it, and it's a simple painting, is all you're gonna, if nothing else, paint it differently so people get that they can't do it. It's, there, you know what? You got a lot more cars parking on, now, they're protected on West Seventh, too, but you got a lot of cars going on this stretch of Morningside Avenue, a lot of people park out in front of their house, and we're just asking them to have their door taken off. You guys are upset, I understand, because we didn't go your way in the Morningside corridor. We'll get over that, because it's, it's, it doesn't mean it's the right thing to do all the way through there, it just doesn't. But the rest of them have got to speak up, but I wasn't here for the May meeting, I don't think, by the way. Anyway, I've been, I said it there, and I've been...
Well, I appreciate that very much.
A proponent of what you're saying, and...
I do have pictures of the, of the lines, too, that, and if you've been down that, that street, you, obviously, you can't go down the street, because it's under construction, but you can see where the, where everything is buried up to Nicolet and, and then to Henry, there are, it's, it's literally six poles, and I realize that that impacts, that's a money-saving issue, and that, you know, giving lines to people's homes is, is an issue as well. However, it's gonna, it's gonna make that look really junky, and I, I don't think, I don't think there was, there's a lot of forethought in the process, and, you know, as I said, communication has been frustrating for me. It's gotten better in the last week, which I'm thankful for, but that, that overhead line and the speed of traffic is really frightening and, and frustrating.
Justin?
Excuse me, where's it buried from? From where to where?
It's, it's literally buried from Lakeport up to Henry, and then Henry to Nicolet, it's not buried, and then Nicolet all the way down to, as you turn on Morningside Avenue, poles begin right in front of the bank and the library. Poles run down the rest of, otherwise, it's all buried.
Justin Potter, civil engineer. On the last phase of the project, we requested Mid-American remove their, their power poles. Those were just feeding the overhead lights that were replaced with the decorative Sternberg style lights, so there wasn't any residences that those were feeding on the previous phase of the project, completed with Lazard. Speaking with Mid-American, there's approximately 12 customers that, on this phase, have overhead services. Numbers run 500 to $2,000 to switch out the plugs from an aerial to a ground lead for your electric meter.
It's how much, total?
Somewhere between 500 to $2,000.
A pole?
No, for your actual meter into your house.
Hookup?
For the hookup.
Mine was about 880.
Pardon me?
To have mine done, it's about $880.
And that is a cost that's typically borne by the residents.
But you are gonna continue to build the road four lanes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. What's that?
What?
I said I didn't hear that.
You're gonna continue to make that stretch of road four lanes when it's open?
The direction we, yes, to build the road as a four-lane road.
Was that discussed at the public meetings, Justin? Did, did we, was there a consensus at the public meeting that...
There wasn't a consensus at the public meetings, it was provided as an option. We did bring that for council, and that was pulled from the agenda, if I remember correctly, and there was some discussion, 15, 20 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, but no vote was taken on it.
What did you bring to, did you bring a recommendation to go three versus four, or vice versa?
To go three versus four with the, with the whole stretch of the project, yes.
It was a whole stretch, and then what, throw it up?
That's different.
Yes.
That's different than what I...
Because it does affect, it affects, it affects drilling pharmacy.
I made it, I made it clear at that library that, and I know the rest of you may not agree, but it doesn't make any sense to have four lanes going through residential neighborhoods when you can't open your car door without getting it taken off.
No, and I've talked with Mr. Weber about that, same thing, because I drive that all the time.
But it was, what they brought, they're forgetting to tell you, was all or none, either do it all our way with diagonal parking, which we were opposed to, I was, you're right.
Yes.
But I was never been opposed to this three-block or four-block, whatever it is, I've never been opposed to that.
Correct, and I think...
And I said, all you have to do is paint the road as you, as you come in and out of those areas, you've got to paint the road. You make it a right-hand turn on that, where you in that four lane, to, to Nicolet, but, anyway.
No, and I'm just saying, I would agree with that as well. I, I do worry about the traffic there, and I see what they do at Morningside College and the track people that run that road all the time. I've rolled on that sidewalk, I'm thankful that now it'll actually be, like, navigable, like, I can actually go on it, that would, that would be nice, but it is scary, because people do go extraordinarily fast right through there, and it's right next to it. I mean, personally, if it was me and I lived there, I would have wanted the divided road. I mean, I've seen a lot of places to that where it's beautiful, and that would make it a lot more friendly for homes. I understand, apparently, we like parades a lot more than we like beautifying the city, but I, that, that was not my fight, that was the Morningside parade people, and so I would not be opposed to, I thought, if there was a way to put a bike lane of something to slow at least on one side or do something, because you would connect right to the trail at Transit. Like, that, you, there's a bigger sidewalk along Transit, and then you go down to where it curves, like, by Alice, that's where my house is, and then it turns into a full trail size, and then that's gonna connect with a new area down by the arena. I mean, if we're talking about that type of stuff, I, that's what I would like, is a bike trail stretching, because then, gosh, if you ran it the whole way or had a way to get a bike lane the whole way, people from Whispering Creek could go all the way to, heck, you could go all the way past that.
Go to Otter Drive.
Yeah, exactly, well, and you could go north, or you could go all the way past Cray, if you could go a long ways outside Riverside, you know.
Now, regarding the speed limit signs, we are looking, we are looking into that, and the number of them and the placement of those.
I am happy to have you park one of those camera things right in front of my house, too. You can put it there as long as you want, and take as many pictures, and you'll make a lot of money. You'll make a lot of money, because they go so fast.
Well, we have to wait till the construction's all done before we can do that.
With the engineers here being able to yield the questions, I mean, are there options? Or are you able to look at that, or is this stance, look, if you do four lanes next to the businesses, it has to be four lanes all the way through? Is that still the stance? Is there anything that we can do?
Though, this, we still can look at this at this point, yes, with the, the lanes, but I have to, I came in late on this project, because I heard you guys, this was, before I started here, so, yeah, we can still look into that.
Because I don't know what the rest of council is, but my appetite would be, if we can slow that traffic, too. I understand the concerns of the businesses. I am still frustrated that people think they can't reverse angle park, like, it's one step's shorter than a parallel park, but I understand that people worry about that, and then you have the unloading and loading, I get that for the businesses, but I, anything we can do to...
So, you want us to look at four to three and angle parking, or just...
No, because I know that, that won't fly. I'm saying anything we can do to shift it to three lanes, or somehow have a bike lane, anything down near the residential to slow that traffic, and make it not right next to the sidewalk is what I would be in favor of.
Aren't three lanes than four?
That's what's indicated in the traffic study.
Yeah. Is Dave still sitting there? Yeah, there we go. I know he... I, for some reason, I recall that argument.
Three lane is, is safer, its capacity is virtually identical to four lane. It is, it is the better road section. No one builds a four-lane road anymore.
Well, I was curious about the stat you gave, traffic rate was 160% higher than normal.
The crash rate is...
The crash rate.
Crash rate of Morningside Avenue is 160...
What are those figures actually?
They're me, they're measured in million miles of vehicles traveled on the roadway, crashes per million miles traveled, so you can...
I think there are 987 traffic per, accidents per million miles, so it amounts to...
Over what period of time? An annually?
No, no, it's per vehicle miles traveled, per million vehicle miles traveled, so it equates, it breaks every roadway, whether it be a local road to an interstate, all down to one... down to one-
For those of us that doesn't matter. Will it go down if you go three lane?
Yes.
That's for those of us that don't-
But your highest crash rates were in the business area and at the, at the area around Come and Go is where your higher crash rates were.
It's going to be those intersections. And so that's why engineers are saying we need to go through the whole way to really reduce-
And right now, you go from Transit, that's three. You'd go up to four and back to three. And every time you make a transition from three to four, you have a merge or a diverge, which is, is a conflicting point. That's why we-
Does that present a problem for you?
I think, I think that's not, that's not the best design of a roadway. No, I don't think so. To go from four, from three to four to three, you'd want to be, you, you want your road section to be as consistent as possible.
What about four to three to four?
Transit's three, Transit's three all the way until you get to the intersection where it just has a turn lane. It has-
Point. You're going from three to four there.
Yeah. We would, it would have stayed as being a, it would have, the idea was is-
Go Transit and you can go, going east on Transit, you can go two lanes out of there and you can go right by that Madonna Rose. You can go both lanes and go straight there.
Yeah, yeah. And that, what the idea would have been, if it would have gone to three lane, that would have become a right turn only lane and it would have had you go straight.
Won't hurt anything if you did.
So, but the, but-
But you, but it was the all or none on the diagonal parking is where you got me.
No, it, it, the thing was is-
Because that's what you said then. Now, you can say you didn't, but you did. When you guys brought that here, you had that reverse diagonal parking.
Yeah. We, that, and that was an idea that when, was generated out of the meeting we had with the businesses, which really was funny because then, then they were the first ones to come and they were opposed to it. The meeting we had at the businesses, it was one of the businesses that came up that, that said, well, could we use that?
Yeah, but I'm saying if you kept the parking, the same, you could still be three-lane through there.
Well, they didn't want three lane regardless.
I understand all that. I get that. But I'm just saying you can be, is all I'm saying. You don't have to be diagonal parking to be the three lane, is all I'm saying. You just, you don't have to be.
No, what, what, what we're doing is is-
I, I once in a while get in that inside lane because my office is up there and if I'm going somewhere after I leave there, I'm scared when I'm driving in the inside lane in front of those, like drilling pharmacy and that. If somebody opens their door there, there's nothing I'm going to do but take it off. Yeah. And the only way you get away is to move that traffic away from that curb.
Yeah. And see, the issue was is, is you were putting a bunch of parallel parking on the north side of the road, which was never going to get used because you already got the library lot there, McDonald's, who has their own parking lot. And the idea was to give more parking on the south side with the businesses who needed parking. So that's why we went to the angled parking. Because you would give that, you'd move that parking to the south side so they could get, they could get the use. Because they're, 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 the people on the north side are either going to pull into the library lot and park and walk across the street. They're not going to park on the street and walk across the street. They're going, if they really feel safe about it. Because, like I said, making a parallel parking maneuver is one step more than making the back-end angle parking maneuver. But that's not here and there. But the, the thing to go from three lane on Transit up to four lane, back to three lane, isn't really the best way to do it. It's either, the best way would be to be consistent.
Side avenue, you're not four lanes once you get to Lakeport.
No, just drive, that's where your, your lane just drops off and now you got two lanes.
You started at Lakeport or you started at Nicolet. What's the big problem? There isn't any difference.
Except you'd end up doing a transition versus a, at a big intersection, a signalized intersection, you can just drop the lane off.
So is there a way to have it at the intersection with Madonna Rose, that one, South St. Hoben, to have it be in three lane?
Yeah, you'd make the transit people turn right going South St. Hoben.
Yeah, that was the plan.
Yeah, you'd make it right.
Even if you could keep it parallel parking and then have one lane and then have the split-
Yeah, the, the only thing with keeping the parallel on both sides was you'd have a small traffic shift going through the intersection. But like I said, you're going to have parallel parking on the north side of the road. They're just never going to get used.
But what if you-
The, the issue-
And, and then the prob, but, but then the also, the, the issue becomes is then they complain about their deliveries, which we had put delivery parking spots in for them. Then other delivery parks, when they double park and they take up, that, that traffic is all going to have to stop because it can't go around. I mean, it could, it could creep out into the two-way left turn lane and get around, but you're going to have people that will be hesitant to do that because there could be oncoming traffic the other way.
That was the problem with the, with the back end, was that it eliminated the option for a truck to stop.
Well, we, we had put in full-on truck parking for them, for unloading and loading.
They didn't want that.
But they didn't want that because it was either at the one end of the block, either end of the block.
Who's getting that freight? There's an alley behind all those businesses.
Drilling.
Drilling.
And the truck.
Yeah, and he's got a alley behind there.
But when, when he gets his deliveries, they just stop. And, and I've noticed it now that they, they do it. They'll just double park and hop out and log the lane up. And we don't ta-
You have to re-educate people, Dave. That's part of what you do.
You should also-
Well, how, would we fix it then?
I don't know.
What's the procedure?
Well, we can go to back to DGR and come up with some different lane alternatives. But this is-
But don't you have to have an agenda before the council to take that?
We'll, we'll probably have to bring it back because I'm sure the businesses want to have their input.
I would think so. And get public input.
You should also consider just taking a trip out there and looking at those poles because it's a disaster. It looks janky and not pretty.
And what do we do as far as that, since it's the homeowner's payment? Do we just say, look, we're doing-
No, that, that's the homeowner cost. The five to $1,800 is for the homeowner to connect to the new underground service. Mid-American is going to charge us to go underground. Couple of hundred thousand dollars, I would assume. I don't know. Did they ever give you a price, Justin?
Well, Mid-American's already moved their poles for the current, for the current project. And, no, I didn't get a cost to go underground at this time.
It, it was a cost we paid when, as part of the Country Club Boulevard project. And it was, I mean-
Don't remind me.
Is this something you could have ready by October 1st, with the first-
Oh, yeah.
Two meetings or-
Yeah.
Two weeks from today?
Yeah, because I, I'm sure DGR's got, it's, they're just going to re, re, not DGR, I'm trying to think, who did it, um-
Snyder.
Snyder. We can, we can dig out those old-
Do that, Dave. I mean, I guess that's what I'd be in favor of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good for that.
And we can, we'll, we'll send out notices to the-
First.
I'll be back on the fir, I'll be, the first, the first will work.
I'm so confused on the poles.
Well, that's why I'm going to decide it today. So-
Yeah, no.
It's got to go back and have-
Well, we can, we can come forward with the, the striping, an option for that. As for the poles, that's going to be costly on our end.
Do we see an option for a bike lane? Like, is that ever going to-
We'll have to look more into that.
Or, or parking in front of, in front of our, on the north side, because there is no parking in front of our homes.
My opinion is this, like, when we pour these new roads, like, say, West 7th or this one or others, I just, I always am curious. I know we don't have the active transportation committee yet that's coming and they're going to make recommendations of, oh, this roadway, do this and this. And I know the striping is going to take place well before that committee even meets. And so what I'm saying is when they come back and say, I would really do one down Morningside Avenue to connect to the trail down here, I just want us to be able to say, oh, well, we can put the striping right here and we'll add it right there. Is that going to be possible?
You only got so much roadway. So-
But, but I even, we drove, like, what, last week in downtown Des Moines and they carve out areas for it. And if, I mean, if they can fit in downtown Des Moines roadways, we have this huge corridor for Morningside Avenue. If you're telling me we can't give two and a half, three feet that's identified as a bike lane?
Oh, but a bike lane's not two and a half, three feet.
Five.
Eight feet.
Not on the roadways downtown Des Moines.
They're at least five.
Yeah.
Guarantee you. They don't look it, but they are.
I'll have to look.
Yeah, I'd much rather have parking on that north side of the street. I really would. I think it makes it look more residential.
Yeah, and that's what, and when we did, when we got down to that quarter, it did. It had parallel parking on both sides. The, the angled parking was only in the business district area. Because we didn't see any point in putting parking in front of McDonald's and the fire station and the, that all have parking lots.
So Dave, what would come back in two weeks? The, the lane?
Yeah, well, we'll- The only one we'll have to generate. And then we'll, we'll send out notices.
What about the light poles? I mean, you said it's expense at-
It would be an expense. I, we'd have to contact Mid-American, but I, at this point, it'll be very difficult to have it done. But it would be, it would be a city expense. And I don't know where we'd get the funds for.
And are they paving right now?
Not yet.
Cities never paid for the homeowner, though.
No.
To connect to their-
No, that would be on each homeowner.
That I know of. No.
No.
But is it too late to do that anyway?
I, I would think we're past that point, unfortunately.
You all should go out and look at it, though, because it's horrible. And you'll want to have it changed. And so that's the thing to look at in, in the future. It seems like such a short-sighted-
But is it, you don't, it adds so much to the cost of that project.
Oh, I get it.
And force the homo, homeowner, homeowner, which no one wants to do, to pay to hook up underground.
I, I, I get that. I get that. But I'm, you know, what, what I'm telling you, when, when this whole project started, I was told that it was going to be all buried. I said, so are those lines going to be buried? Oh, yep, they'll be buried, no problem. So I was just waiting. And, you know, as the process went on, I would have started this four months ago, had I known that, that it wasn't going to be something that happened. It, it looks so janky to have these two blocks of everything else is beautiful and, and updated. And then we have these, and, and I don't know if it's going to, if, if they're going to continue the, the antique-looking lights up in front of our homes or not. You know, my landscape architect had looked at the, had looked at the plans and there were X's through the, through the poles. So he thought they were going to be gone. So he, he planned the work to reflect the fact that the poles weren't going to be there.
But the project was done in phases, wasn't it? So it's unfortunate that you clearly understood it was all going to be underground.
Yeah, the, the, the Sternberg lights are only in the business district area.
Right. All right. Well, work with this gentleman, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other citizens to be heard?
Mr. Greckin? The only thing I have, it's, I was curious about, is there any update on the rules and we were, are looking at to change for the dog park out at Bacon Creek? I haven't heard any more since we had that discussion.
I'm not sure if the committee has met yet. I know a committee's being formed.
I think the committee has met. I was under the impression that-
I know Matt was here a minute ago.
That they had some people together.
I will follow up.
Okay, I appreciate an update on that. And I think that's all for me.
Yep, I'm, I pass.
Um, I would just say the 2018 Chamber of Commerce Dinner is coming up on this Thursday. I don't know if there's still tickets or anything, but should be a great speaker, great event. And I believe that's all. Oh, the only other thing I have is this Saturday, there's Nature Calls. It's a fundraiser at the convention center for Dorothy Pico Nature Center. It's actually a great event. There's beer and wine, or craft beer and wine tasting. There's local artists. There are a lot of-
What does it look like, up to Don't Drink, get to do with these things?
You get to drink water, just like me. Cheers.
There's art. There's public art. There's auctions.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You don't have a drinking problem. It doesn't sound like you're-
Hey, we're just glad you don't, Bob.
That's all I got.
I have nothing further.
I have a couple of things. Mr. Padmore and I went to the League of Cities meetings, Iowa League of Cities and, and Council of Lofts. And although it's predominantly geared for the smaller communities, there are some things that we learned there and, and it would be worth a trip for some of you to go and sometime in the future, if you would. Want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Moore for helping with Convoy of Hope on Saturday. Pushed a lot of shoes out of there. And I have some numbers. 2,118 pairs of shoes you gave away.
Wow.
No wonder I'm exhausted.
3,940 grocery bags of food were given to 2,531 people. 539 volunteers from 17 different churches. $59,000 budget. 180 blood checks. 35 mobile showers were given. 400 guests were served by the job and careers. Veterans were, and then they were garden, gardens in a bag that were given out. So all in all, it was a, it was a very successful event.
And well organized.
And they do a nice job of organizing. And I thought the park worked out well. Just so you know, it was hot, but could have been a little cooler. But other than that, it was, the park actually, I think, worked better than ever because people actually walked there this year. They did not have to drive. A lot of people drove, don't get me wrong. But we saw a lot of people walking over the hill, didn't you, coming to the event that, that I'm not sure would have necessarily been able to get downtown.
Agreed.
Bob, do they do that like every other year?
Every other year.
Yeah, I was like, wow.
Every other year, so.
We're really glad to participate.
Yeah. Yeah, we're glad to have volunteers. So I move adjourned.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?